All right, it's 5:52 PM. I'd like to call the public hearing to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott? Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
You have nine of eleven.
Thank you. All right, we'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County for the election integrity grant. Anybody for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? No?
Hold on.
No?
No.
Motion to return?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. We'll restart at 6:01. Thank you.
Here, I'll make a copy now. Maybe I can do it.
Okay, now I've actually. John?
Yep.
Remember when we do the win?
Yeah.
We have to appoint whoever's gonna be our chief officer.
Right. I don't, I didn't really discuss that with anybody, so, okay.
But when we sign the paperwork, you gotta put, you gotta fill the name in.
Yeah. You have something in your hair.
What do you?
It's gone. It was like something, it looked like a piece of grass or something.
All right, thank you.
If I didn't tell you, it was gonna bother me all night.
Wait, 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 wait. Where did you come by from? You came by from your phone? I meant to my office.
Just calling here.
Hey. Leanne, how you doing?
Hey, Leanne.
Hey, Leanne. I've ordered a. A lot more time to figure this out. So they didn't fulfill their. So they didn't fulfill their contract. So it's been, it's been going back to.
Negotiating.
The way the contract reads, you're supposed to get ninety-five percent coverage. But we're not getting it. There's some areas that was manacled. Doesn't have a coverage. Oh, sure, sure. No problem.
Oh.
About what?
Just one. Just one.
What's wrong? What could possibly be stressing you out? Oh, okay. All right, well, then.
As long as my world is in check, I just leave everything else alone.
Yeah. There's a lot. Oh, you're back.
So.
So what's happening is.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I, I, I heard some of your conversation over there, but I didn't hear the name.
Something more specific, I might be able to help you there, but I don't know, you know, the county. So something happened, the Vice President was here, right? And in Wilkes-Barre, which is right downtown, by Kings and System.
John Concur's Wilkes, maybe?
I, I'm guessing we got the information from the same person.
So.
So.
That's what happened down there in Texas, the county law. You know, there are schools in that area that come to work. It could be, if they're say, well, we got a nine years every. Or like if it's in hunting grounds.
I'd be, I'd be, you know.
Thirty-one, thirty-eight years.
All right, no, no problem.
Ten miles away from downtown, we don't have, but it should work. There's a place, it doesn't, Hazelton, we need Hazelton, Manacled, Wilkes-Barre, work.
I know a whole northern third of the county is very tough department. It's got a lot of money on dollars and stuff. I'm sure that place is where, even if it's Manacled, it's relatively smaller. Are you just talking about Manacled City or the school? It's the city. It seems like it's the city. So that's the stumbling block.
Well, a couple of things. Well, it costs a lot of money to get fixed, then it's gonna be a lot. You know, we're down to a final resolution, and then also the pockets is, you know, just when we, when the version, oh, we don't get here.
Thank you.
And then, you know, you try and work on that, but it doesn't work up here. And.
Oh, sorry.
It's, it's working, you know, but then what they're telling us, they're not looking at that, you know, they're doubt, they're least calling them, saying, I'm trying to get a solution. So the war you use there is for finding a.
No more?
Yes. Well, the war you're using. The war you're using.
Yes, okay.
Well, it also shouldn't work that way. Right? So they don't wanna fix it because they're gonna pass too much money. Now, I would get ready for that whole wishy-washy.
Oh, no, 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 no. It was, it was this.
The artist.
Sent it out in an email to us and it sent it.
So the contract was done by other, other than different. But when they do a contract, the artist, he said it would be ninety-five, ninety-five. They gave their contract to him less than standard. And it was adopted, they adopted theirs into their contract, and then somebody else does it. But that's, you know, now we could leave, because we're saying it's probably ninety-five, ninety-five. But if we live in, we want to get GPS working, there's things that they wanna get working on, and they can't get that started until we get the contract. So that's unfortunate.
Which is our.
Internal engineer.
Could be, I don't know.
By our communication, communication.
But what did you run, I'll tell you.
Oh, wasn't Wednesday the places?
That's cool how they do that.
They're working on it, and if that goes through, then we have seven lines that might get cut off. It's gonna pass the customer to, to get.
Yeah, that's, you know.
Yeah, that's a couple of these places. But it's gonna pass, because they're gonna give us the material.
All right, council members, at 6:01 PM, I'd like to call the voting session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Um, roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith? Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ten of eleven?
All right, thank you. We have no recognitions or ceremonial proclamations. Are there any deletions from the voting agenda? Any deletions? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on voting session agenda items only. I have one slip here from Mr. Griffith.
Good evening, council. The item I'd like to speak to council about tonight is on item number three regarding the contract for Master Touch. I spent a good time poring over the RFP's responses to these. Master Touch, as I said at the last meeting that council had, is probably clearly the best contract that this council can adopt. The other two should have been disqualified because there was some information that was missing from their RFP, but we considered them anyway. I'm assuming they considered them anyway. Master Touch integrates with our RBA. One of the things is, as a controller, when we audit tax collectors, we get a, we get to do an entrance interview and listen to the tax collectors, say what works for them, what doesn't work for them, if they have any improvements, and continually we hear the tax bills don't scan into RBA, they have problems with the barcode, those type of things when we use the other vendor. So it's encouraging to see that we're actually going out for another vendor, and the one that we currently are using did not actually even bid. So I think the council should vote on Master, on Master Touch. It's clearly the best contract that we have, and not only are they the least, they're not necessarily the least expensive, but they're certainly the most qualified when I look through the RFPs. One of, one of the most important things that we could think about with Master Touch is that they also do tax bills for other counties, which is very, very important, and it also integrates with our RBA tax collection system, which is really key to making it efficient and getting the right product that works for the treasurer's office as well as budget and finance and the tax collector. So they have thirty years' history. Master Touch does. They're certified postal service, which saves us the rate on the postage. They have a disaster recovery plan, which was really important that the, the budget and finance department and manager put in in case there's a problem, we don't get an issue with the tax bills not going out on time. But the most important thing we have to consider is that we are right at the deadline to get our tax bills made. It's almost February first. We need to get these bills out because we did not take a tran, and we can't delay on this. So I strongly encourage council to not delay on that, pass that thing, so we could get our bills out and start to get some revenue into the county. Master, and my, again, my recommendation is that Master Touch is the best choice for the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom? All right, hearing done. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five voting session?
Second.
So moved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. Starting off with the agenda, number one, motion to adopt the ordinance amending the 2024 general fund budget for Luzerne County for the election integrity grant.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving the chief elected official agreement between Luzerne County and Schoolkill County for the LSWDA.
What was the first?
Uh, Brittany. Motion, sorry. She's, she's closer to my left here. I couldn't, so. The sound traveled quicker from here. All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call?
On the question?
Go ahead.
Do we have to name a council member in this resolution?
That is correct. We do. Would anyone?
Do we have to do that now?
Move to open nominations, Mr. Chair? If that's necessary?
I don't really know if it's necessary to open nominations, but I guess we can do that. If we wanna open nominations, that's fine. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
I'll nominate Mr. Sabatino.
Don't all yell at once.
All right.
I nominate Mr. Sabatino.
Mr. Sabatino?
I second that.
Motion and a second.
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Motion to close, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motions are closed. We will vote on the resolution with Mr. Sabatino's name. But, Ms. Lawrence?
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution.
On the question, we also have to do the motion, don't we, with the name in there?
Uh, since it's the resolution and there was only one nomination, we were just putting his name in the blank line.
Okay.
So I, I really don't think that we need to do another, um, yeah. Because we were only voting on the resolution, not on the, yeah.
Do you wanna redo that roll call?
No, I think it's okay. Yeah, I think it's fine. Okay, that's okay. All right, number three, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with Master's Touch for printing of real estate tax bills.
So moved?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number four, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a contract with UPMC Western Psychiatric Hospital for evaluations of participants and caregivers in the Luzerne County Juvenile Wellness Court. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority. Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number six, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the FM Kirby Center for the Performing Arts. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll.
Did you skip the flood protection ones?
No, we just did it. That was the previous one.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, now moving on to the appointments to the authorities, boards, and commissions. First, we'll have a motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member to the Greater Hazelton Can Do Board of Directors. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open. There's a motion for Mr. Sabatino?
Second.
There's a second. Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. All right, we have one name for the resolution, so we'll vote on the resolution for Mr. Sabatino. Roll call?
Do we have a first and a second?
Yeah. Oh, is there, okay, is there a motion for Mr. Sabatino?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Roll call?
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member to Luzerne Conservation District Board of Directors.
So moved.
Is there a motion? That's to open nominations?
Oh, motion to open nominations.
And second, okay.
And I, I would like to nominate Mr. Wilovich.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, all in favor?
All, all in favor of opening nominations?
Sorry about, sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Closed. All right, nominations are open. Mr. Thornton?
I would like to nominate Mr. Wilovich.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for Mr. Wilovich.
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We'll now have the motion for the resolution with Mr. Wilovich's name in the Conservation District.
So moved.
Motion and a second. All right, motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member to Luzerne, Wyoming County's Mental Health and Developmental Services Program Advisory Board. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion open.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Brittany Stevenson.
Second.
There's a mo, there's a nomination for Ms. Stevenson and a second. Anybody else?
Motion to close, second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to close nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. We'll now have a motion for the resolution for Ms. Stevenson.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next up, we have appointments to the authorities. First, we have the Housing Authority with a term ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. Is there a motion to open nominations for the Housing Authority?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
I'd like to, go ahead.
Go ahead. Ms. Stevenson, go ahead.
Oops, sorry. I'd like to nominate Devin Reese.
Okay. Devin Reese, is there a second on that?
Second.
There's a second on Devin Reese. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Kathleen Kurchavich. I'm sorry, Chernavich.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second for Ms. Chernavich.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Ralph Sharp.
There's a motion for Mr. Sharp, and there's a second. Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Who was this, okay?
Uh, oh, Mr. Lescavage. All right. All right, nominations are closed. So what we'll do is, Ms. Lawrence will go around the room, call out your name, and when you, when you, when she calls your name, please state your preference, and then whoever has the lowest amount at the end will be eliminated.
Could you just state the three names again?
Yep. They are Kathleen Chernavich, Ralph Sharp, and Devin Reese.
Aye.
And when she calls your name, like I said at the end, whoever has the least amount of votes will be eliminated from the list, and then we'll go from there.
If you get six though, they're in, right?
Yes.
Okay. Ready?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Chernavich?
Ms. Kryszynowski?
Devin Reese?
Mr. Lescavage?
Ralph Sharp.
Ms. McDermott?
Ms. Chernavich?
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Sharp.
Ms. Stevenson?
Devin Reese.
Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Sharp.
He has six.
Alright, Mr. Sharp has six, so we won't need to go into any more rounds of voting. Um, we'll have the, a motion for the resolution for Mr. Sharp.
I move that Mr. Sharp be appointed to the Housing Authority.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, next up, we have the Industrial Development Authority with three terms ending twelve-thirty-one-twenty-nine. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open, however, I do have one really quick question. Um, Ms. Lawrence, is Mr. Knapp eligible to serve on this board?
Yes.
He is, okay, alright. Alright, nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Martinelli.
Second.
Motion and a second for Ms. Martinelli.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Tim McGinley.
Second.
Mr. McGinley, there's a second for Mr. McGinley, any other nominations?
Uh.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Mr. Ronald Knapp.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for Mr. Knapp.
Mr. Chair, there are seven openings, right?
Yep, and only three nominations, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
We, uh, is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. Alright, so we have three spots and seven openings, um, we will just go down the list and do each resolution individually for each individual, so first we'll have the resolution for Mr. Knapp.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no, it passes?
Thank you, next up, we'll have the resolution for Ms. Karen Martinelli. Is there a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Lum, Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we'll have the, uh, go ahead. Yes. I don't believe it matters, I think it's just what his preference was. Um, is there, I, I don't, attorney skin, is there, there, I don't believe there's an, there's an issue, correct?
No, he can, he can refuse. No, he could refuse if he wishes.
If he doesn't want to serve on this, on this particular authority after, you know, being nominated, he can certainly, yeah, he's certainly free to say no, no thanks. Okay, so there's, where did I leave off, a motion and a second, correct?
No, we.
Yes.
Resolution?
Yeah.
Uh, I move then, uh, for a resolution to.
For Mr. McGinley?
Appoint Mr. McGinley.
Alright.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Ten yes, one no, it passes?
Okay, next up, we have nominations to Luzerne County Transportation Authority with two terms ending twelve-thirty-one-twenty-nine. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll, I'm, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Dennis Driscoll.
I second it.
Alright, there's a motion and a second for Dennis Driscoll.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second for Lynette.
Motion to close nominations.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we have two nominations for two spots, so we'll just individually do the resolutions, first we'll have Mr. Driscoll, is there a, uh?
Motion for Mr. Driscoll.
Second.
Motion and a second for the resolution, roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, next we'll have the resolution for Ms. Valano.
So moved. Second.
Who was the first, I don't know.
Greg.
Greg, Mr. Wilovich, alright.
Sorry, my apologies.
Second.
Okay. Okay, motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, next up, we have nominations to the Northeastern Pennsylvania Health and Higher Education Authority, one term, twelve-thirty-one-twenty-nine.
Motion open?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Alberto.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for Ms. Alberto. Motion to close nominations. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed, we have one opening, one nomination, we'll have the resolution for Ms. Alberto.
I move that Ms. Alberto, uh, for the resolution for Higher Education Authority.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Alright, next up, we have appointments to boards and commissions. First up, we have aging with four terms ending twelve-thirty-one-twenty-seven.
Motion to open nominations, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
You can open, oh, you can nominate all four in one, but you just have to do four separate resolutions?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, alright. Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate all four candidates.
Alright.
I'll second that.
Second.
You wanna just name them?
Yeah, alright, so the four candidates are Joan Corey, Noah Davis, Angel Mathis, and Dominic Trombetta. There's a motion and a second, um.
Motion and a second.
Alright, there's a motion to close nominations. All in favor, I mean, uh, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed, alright, now we will individually have the resolutions for each candidate, first we'll have Jo, uh, Joanne Corey.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we'll have, um, Mr. Noah Davis.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, next we'll have Angel Mathis.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Finally, we'll have Dominic Trombetta.
I move for Dominic Trombetta to be appointed.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next up, we'll have children and youth with five terms ending twelve-thirty, thirty-one-twenty-seven. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate all five candidates.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for all five candidates.
Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed, alright, we will have five separate resolutions for each candidate, and we'll start off with, uh, Alec Frank.
Second that motion?
There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, next up, we'll have Janelle Nardone.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we have Felicia Ray. Motion and a second, roll call.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Next up, we have Robert Watson.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Finally, we have Joshua Wilder.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, roll call.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
With three terms ending twelve thirty-one, twenty thirty. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
Mr. Chair, before we nominate, I just want to thank all twelve people on the eligible list for applying. And we can only pick three, that means nine cannot be chosen tonight, but that's not a no. We're not saying no to you, we're just saying yes to three people. But I want to thank everybody who applied, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman, I'd like to cast the nomination for Arthur Breeze.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion.
I'd like to nominate Joseph Long.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Ms. Unvarski.
Okay, hold on a second. Did you get?
I got the other.
Okay. And then, there's a second on Mr. Long, is there a second on Ms. Unvarski?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dr. Bernard Graham.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
I'd like to nominate Joseph Oprendergast.
Second.
Second.
Alright, there's a second on Mr. Oprendergast.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations, Mr. Chair? There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are now closed, we have one, two, three, four, five, six nominees for three seats. So we can...
Do one seat at a time.
Yeah. I guess we'll do one seat at a time then. Okay, so for the first seat, council members, as your name is called, state your preference. And if you're intending to vote for this person at some point, try to vote for them when their name is called for this particular seat. So we'll have the first resolution. I'll open nominations for that.
No, we're just going to do the roll call for one name.
Okay, we'll do roll call for the first name, for the first resolution.
Okay.
Could you state the name? What?
Yeah, somebody has to nominate the person.
Nominate Ms. Unvarski?
Well, no. We are, I'm going to go around, you're going to tell me one name for the first seat.
Withdraw my nomination.
Okay.
So, Ms. Stevenson?
I nominate Arthur Breeze.
Mr. Thornton?
I nominate Mr. Joseph Long.
Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Haas?
Ms. Unvarski.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Arthur Breeze.
Mr. LaScavage?
Mr. Long.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Long.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Long.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Long.
He has eight, so...
Okay, eight votes for Mr. Long, so then we have to do the resolution for him as well?
Yes.
Okay, alright, I'll have a motion for the resolution for Mr. Long.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Alright, we'll now have the second resolution, the second spot. Someone like to stay there?
I...
Go around.
Oh, go around, okay, I apologize.
No.
Sorry. This happens frequently.
Okay, Mr. Thornton?
I nominate Ms. Unvarski.
Mr. Wilovich?
Ms. Unvarski.
Mr. Haas?
Ms. Unvarski.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Ms. Unvarski.
Mr. LaScavage?
Ms. Unvarski.
Ms. McDermott?
Ms. Unvarski.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Ms. Unvarski.
Ms. Smith?
Ms. Unvarski.
Ms. Stevenson?
Arthur Breeze.
Mr. Lombardo?
Ms. Unvarski?
So she has ten.
Alright, thank you. We'll now have the resolution for the nomination of Ms. Unvarski.
Show move.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call for Ms. Unvarski?
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Alright, we'll now have the roll call for the third position. Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. McBride.
Mr. Haas?
Dr. Graham.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. LaScavage?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. McBride.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. McBride.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Ms. Stevenson?
Arthur Breeze.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Okay, he has five. Mr. Breeze has two. Mr. Graham has one.
Mr. McBride has three. Right.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so we'll move on, it'll be between Mr. Oprendergast and Mr. McBride.
So just for the record, I guess, the two lowest vote counts drop?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yes.
Just the one, isn't it?
Just the... Well, it would be...
Just the one?
Mr. Breeze, yeah.
He's the only one that drops out. No, Mr. Graham.
Mr. Graham as well, yeah.
No, he's the only one.
Mr. Graham got one.
Yeah, Mr. Graham got one vote.
So, does the charter say we drop two people there or just one person?
Just the one, the lowest.
The lowest.
Okay. So we have to go around again and vote for the, between the three? Okay. Alright. Go ahead, Ms. Lawrence.
Okay, Mr. Wilovich?
Mr. McBride.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Mr. Breeze.
Mr. LaScavage?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. McBride.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. McBride.
Ms. Smith?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Ms. Stevenson?
Arthur Breeze.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Oprendergast.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Oprendergast.
He has six, so he would be...
Okay, thank you. We'll now have the nomination for the resolution for Mr. Oprendergast. Is there a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Alright, thank you.
Again, I just want to thank everybody, because there's a lot of people, a lot of great people, they're great resumes, and probably every one of them would do a good job. Thank you.
Okay, alright, two more to go. Next up, we have MHDS with a nursing term ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-seven, and a citizen organization development services term ending the same time. Is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion to open nominations?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Medievich.
I'll second that nomination.
Motion to close?
Look...
Hold on.
Doing both, okay.
Well, I wanted to nominate her, but I couldn't pronounce her last name. Smaglik?
I'd like to nominate Gabriel Smaglik.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there a motion to close?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. Okay, we'll start off with the nursing term. Is there a nomination for Ms. Medievich?
The nominator?
Second.
Alright, motion and a second, roll call?
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the citizen member. Is there a nomination for Mr. Smaglik?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Alright, finally, we have the zoning hearing board.
Point order, I don't think I got to vote on that one, I don't think it makes a difference, but, yes.
Did you? Ms. Lawrence, did you, I think you might not have called Mr. Haas.
I don't think it makes a difference, but nonetheless.
Okay.
I apologize.
Alright, Chair. Okay, so he voted, he would have voted, he voted yes.
You were canceled.
Okay. Alright, finally, we have the zoning hearing board, is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion open.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Rodney Kaiser.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for Mr. Kaiser.
Motion to close.
There's a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we have one nomination for one position, so we'll just have the resolution for Mr. Kaiser.
Show move, I nominate Mr. Kaiser to the zoning hearing board.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Mr. Haas, I'll do you first, I don't...
Thanks for not canceling me, yes.
I'm so sorry. Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Mrs. Stevenson? Oh, wow. You changed genders and everything.
Oh, my.
I'm sorry.
Thank God, it's the last nomination. Mr. Thornton?
Hopefully, nobody's listening in. Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Alright, thank you very much.
You know, I do have a twin.
Thank you for bearing with us on that. Number nine, motion to adopt the resolution approving the sale of certain parcels of property held in repository by Elite Revenue Solutions LLC acting at Luzerne County Tax Claim Bureau.
Show move. Second.
There's a motion and a second, roll call?
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Number ten, motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a sales agreement between Luzerne County and the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority for real property identified by the PIN number, which I will not read, located within Hanover Township.
Show moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Roll call?
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Finally, we have the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute a sales agreement between Luzerne County and the Luzerne County Flood Protection Authority for real property identified by another PIN number, which I will not read, located within Hanover Township.
Show moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call?
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Kraschnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much. We'll now have public comment on...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you did a very good job there.
Tried to do it as quick as possible. We'll now have public comment on non-agenda items, I do have Mr. Griffith.
Good evening, counsel. I want to talk about the LEO program for the airport officers. This is not about security at the airport. I want to be really clear with this counsel. This is not about security at the airport. This is about cost to the county. It's about cost to the taxpayers. We're losing serious money there at that airport, number one. Last year, that airport cost us one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in salaries. We lost seventy-one thousand dollars last year just in salaries alone, for cost. There's a valid, there's an invalid contract that they're working under. This council approved that program. The DA has sixteen-twenty rights, but he doesn't have sixteen-twenty rights to violate a contract that you people approve. Okay? There is no contract. He gave the people a raise from eighteen dollars an hour to twenty-five dollars an hour. He has no authority to do that. You guys have a contract. Contract's expired. Council needs to step up and do their job and fix this contract, so the taxpayers are protected against spending, overspending. There's two LEO officers there every single day, two. Why two? I don't think the airport's that busy that we need two, plus TSA officers. Why two? I don't know. That's not in the agreement. The LEOs cost the county eleven thousand dollars a month, we're getting twenty-five hundred dollars a month from the airport. That's wrong. They need to be pulling their fair share. This is an agreement between this council and the airport. This council and the airport made that agreement. Not the DA, not anybody else. That contract's expired, we need to step up our game and make them accountable to their contract with the airport. It clearly says in the contract that when the funding stops, the program stops. That doesn't mean, that means they have to figure out some other way to get LEO officers or something. It doesn't mean that you continue to do what we're doing. Three of those officers are, should be in the retirement system, they're over a thousand hours a year. Mr. Thornton's on the retirement board. Once you hit a thousand hours or more, you must contribute to the retirement system. Their employees making sixteen hundred hours a year and not in our retirement system. That is wrong. There's a lot of problems with this program. Council needs to step up, sit down with the DA, sit down with the airport, and fix this problem. I'm going to the airport board meeting on Thursday, we have members on this council that sit on that board. We need to protect the taxpayers of this county against this type of thing. Now, we have three members that sit there on that board, they need to step up and voice their opinion that this county can't afford to pay this type of money without any checks and balances. Without a contract, the DA does whatever he wants. We're now giving him twenty-five dollars an hour, out of line.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith.
These, these LEO officers are making more than our employees, thirty-eight thousand dollars a year.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom?
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, can, can I move to remand Mr. Griffith's concern to the members of the airport board so that they can take action and lobby on our behalf on Thursday?
Sure. You can do that, but as a city member of the board, there's a few things that we have to take in consideration. A few weeks ago, there was an article that I believe that our airport is the third highest airport for confiscating weapons. The second issue that you have to understand, there is no one in this room that can question the DA's authority of where he stations law enforcement. That is what he's elected to do, and if he chooses to put two LEO officers at the airport, then I respect that. And every member of council should respect that as well. And number three, we have to make sure our airports are safe. The size of AVP of that airport is similar to the size of a terrorist that got on a plane in an airport in Maine, and the plane ended up in one of the buildings at the Trade Center. Do you think, for a minute, that people who want to do damage don't look at soft targets? If you don't believe that, then I hope you rested well under the rock that you slept under. So it may cost Luzerne County some money, but the majority of that airport, probably ninety-eight percent of that airport, is located in Luzerne County. And if something happens there because the airport is lax in their safety... Do you know who's going to be named as a defendant? Anybody want to take a guess? Does anybody want to take a guess as to why we would be named as a defendant? Because we had noticed? And we took officers away? So you can vote to have the representatives advocate to not go forward with agreement and not to have officers at that airport. But I have an obligation to the people of this community, and I'm going to keep my obligation to them. I have the utmost respect to our district attorney. Do you think he wants to take on more law enforcement? You don't think that he has enough on his plate? We should thank him. That's what we should do. So be penny, penny wise and dollar foolish if you go through with that.
Alright, thank you, Manager Crocomo. Mr. Haas?
Yeah, I'd just still like the conversation to carry on with the members and the board, I don't think there's, that's not unreasonable.
And we do, and we do, and also, we did, all airports had federal funding, but the federal government cut that back, which doesn't make sense. But here we are. We did reach out to, at the time, Congressman Cartwright and Congressman Dan user, and now we reached out to Congressman Breznerhan to try to get that funding back, they have to fight for it back in DC. So we're not giving up on it, but again, we have to do what we have to do to protect the people going through that airport.
Thank you. Mr. Wilovich?
Again, airport security is critical, and I mean, if you want to bring that resolution to council, please do, I mean, if you want to vote to void the contract, go ahead.
Not to void the contract, but to lobby on behalf.
Well, not to lobby, but to actually, like, fulfill the contract or void the contract, because the contract's expired, so if you want to bring something, please do.
And I'd also like to add that on Monday, I had discussion with the controller, and I had a discussion with our chief county solicitor, and we will bring the contract again to council. So we are moving forward with it, but if anybody, anybody in this room, anybody on Zoom, anybody thinks that we should put into question the security of the airport, you're sadly mistaken.
Mr. Thornton?
That's not my public comment.
Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just my personal feelings, I'm always for more security and more police, and I am in this case. Absolutely, it's, it's a no-brainer that you have to have some kind of law enforcement there, just in case. My, my only question is, we, we had some good ideas here, we discussed about other sources of funding to pay for that, such as your airport adding on fifty cents or one dollar per flight ticket, or adding a dollar per car that parks overnight there for the week, and both of those solutions were well received by people, including the district attorney, I remember I spoke to him, and it would produce enough money to pay the annual salaries of these two officers. I would just ask that maybe at the airport meeting, that that be raised again, and, and see if there's opposition to it, or if they're in favor of that, or where that's going, because I, for one, certainly don't want to see lax security there, and that's not an option. Thank you.
Thank you, just to...
My understanding, and it was Councilwoman McDermott, I think, put those ideas forward, and we don't have control over the ticket prices, we can't do that, that's the airlines. There is the possibility with the parking, and we're looking into that.
Thank you, and just one other thing to add to this, that we haven't really discussed, at least in this particular conversation, but it has been discussed in the past, is that Lackawanna County actually does not contribute anything to this program. So we're, you know, taking the brunt of the responsibility financially for it right now, what would be very helpful to us, at least in the interim, is if Lackawanna County would, would be willing to contribute a, a, a percentage of funds in order to fund this program, that's, that's one of the biggest issues.
Which I did bring up to them before we passed the budget at the airport.
Okay.
Of course, they're, they're in dire straits with their financial situation, however, yeah, as I said, next year, we want to see something, it's not fair that we're the only ones, and I know we talked about that before.
Yes.
Definitely was brought up to them.
Yeah, and just to wrap this up too, Ms. Chair, we've been dealing with this for 12 years. We need, you know, I'd like to really see some action on that unrelated issue that Controller Griffith brought up. You know, this was not calling to question anything regarding security. Not speaking for the man, but he was talking about cost savings and making sure that the appropriate channels are taken to pay for such things. So what Mr. Thornton brought up, totally legitimate. And that's that kind of discussion was what I was suggesting, that we remand our delegation up there to go forward and make sure they get the best value for what we're paying for up there to serve the residents of the county, not at the expense of security, which I believe is what Mr. Griffith tried to explain. Thank you.
Thank you. So was that, was that an actual official motion then, Mr. Haas?
Yeah, official motion. To remand our delegation to get the best value for the court concern that Mr. Griffith brought up about the LEO agreement.
Okay, is there a second?
Not controversial whatsoever, just to get the best value for our taxpayers.
I'll second it.
All right, motion and a second. Should I do roll call, or? All right, roll call.
Before we start roll call, can you restate the statement that we are about to vote on? Please.
And can we do this if it was in sunshine?
Is this allowed?
Because of sunshine? I mean, I know we're discussing it, but how could you just put the motion out there?
I think you can put a motion out.
Attorney's scheme.
Point of order.
It's not a resolution.
Microphone.
And the subject's been discussed at past public meetings here multiple times.
I just got to restate my motion to remand to our delegation for the next airport authority meeting to get the best value for the taxpayers regarding the LEO agreement.
It's not on the agenda. I don't know how you want us to do that. I mean, that, that motion makes no sense at all.
So on the agenda is the airport contract, correct? That is on the agenda?
No. It's not on the agenda. It's not on the agenda at all. What I said was I'm, we are going to bring the agreement to council, Luzerne County Council. I said it to the Controller on Monday morning when I met with him. And I met with the Chief County Solicitor. So I don't know if you want us to say something out of order, but it's not on the airport authority agenda. And I am not going to advocate for anything. You can couch it in terms of the taxpayers. But what you're doing is putting people, including taxpayers in Luzerne County, in danger. That's what you're doing.
My only question about this particular motion is just that it, in my opinion, I'm under the impression that this is what the Airport Board members are supposed to be doing every day. This is part of their job, is to be advocating on behalf of the taxpayers and the citizens of Luzerne County. So if we're just asking them to do their job, like restate, restating the motion like that, doesn't, to me, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
And quite honestly, every board meeting, we do discuss it.
So, Ms. Chair, I'll remove my second.
Okay. All right, is there a second for?
I mean, I'll remove my first as well. Again, we're looking, a lot of people are concerned about this, not just the Controller, that we're, and this has been a long-term problem that we've been contending with here, and we just want to make sure we see some results for result time. I withdraw that sincerely.
All right, we have another public comment now on the Zoom, Mr. Granteed.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mr. Granteed, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, listening to that conversation about the security up at the airport. I'm just curious as to what they do at the airport. Are they both on at the same time, or are they on different shifts? And what is their assignment while they're there? Because the TSA actually does the screening and the security around baggage. So I'm just curious as to, you know, what their duties are.
Is that the end of your comment, Mr. Granteed?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I believe that their job is with involving confiscation of materials such as like a gun or any other contraband that might be there, securing them, and also keeping suspects in custody and having the ability to do that until other police forces arrive to transport them. So the TSA doesn't have that responsibility. No other, no other entity at the airport has the ability to actually do that. So that's why there has to be this group of officers there, of which I believe they're on two different shifts. So there's not, I don't think there's two on it each time.
Yeah, that's my understanding. And the TSA doesn't have jurisdiction. They only have a limited jurisdiction. So we have to have police present to, to protect against other crimes.
If you ever pull up to the airport, you see the security officers out there. You can't park in front of the airport. They'll come over and they'll say you have to move. So that's, that's where you see a lot of them. Although.
The only time, only time I ever noticed them was.
Mr. Granteed, your comment time is done. You said you were done. I apologize. Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Lescavage.
Every airport I've been in, the police are on the airport side, TSA is on the gate side. And you never see them cross over. I'm not saying if there wasn't a tragic thing, they wouldn't, but I have never seen that in my life.
And we're looking into, is your idea about the parking? And we are looking into it, but it can't happen overnight. Things like that can happen overnight, but we are looking into it. The airport and all in town has their own police force. I mean, that's an option too, but we are looking into those alternatives.
So the last time this subject came up, I went home, like I always do, and I Google everything. And there was a lot of good ideas, and one of them was to put a dollar on the parking per day. And I don't think that's going to really break anybody if we did that. But it's like, you're right, it's going to take time. We have to get to that point, but we're certainly not going to leave it unattended while we're discussing different options.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Ms. Chair.
Oh, wait, I apologize. Hold on, hold on. We have one more public comment that I forgot to read. It's an online comment from Robin and Walter Kochan from Dallas Township. It says, "To Luzerne County Council, whether during your campaign or while in office, many of you have expressed concern over election integrity. As you know, from Luzerne County, new voting issues in particular the last several years, improvements are greatly needed. As such, we implore you not to renew the Dominion Voting System contract. While same-day voting and hand-counting paper ballots in local precincts would be more fair and accurate, we understand you are most likely unprepared to pursue that avenue at this time. Thankfully though, the Commonwealth of Virginia has already laid the groundwork, which could also make our county elections process less confusing and more accurate and transparent. The four pages of Virginia's comprehensive election security protecting legal voters and accurate counting documentation explains how they secure their voting process by implementing significant yet easy measures such as using ballot counting machines, not voting machines, not allowing mass mailing of ballots, and using ballot counting machines not connected to the internet. This document approved by the Commonwealth of Virginia is also referred to as the Yonkin Executive Order and was previously sent to you by another Luzerne County voter. Attached is a copy for your information again. As representatives elected to make the best decisions for governing Luzerne County, we hope you will take action to bring forth these positive changes to Luzerne County's election success. Not renewing the Dominion contract and sourcing a reliable company that provides ballot counting machines not connected to the internet is a great place to start. Thank you in advance for your consideration." Okay, is there a motion to adjourn now? All in favor? Opposed? Huh? Yeah, I think so. All right, all right, count. Hello? 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 The heck is going on? No, I, oh, there we are. All right, council members, it's 10 after 7:00. I'd like to get restarted here in a minute or two. All right, it's 7:11 PM. I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Ms. Krishnowski?
Here.
Mr. Lescavage?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wulovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Eleven of eleven.
Thank you very much. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's adopted. First, we have budget reports for December 2024.
Can you hear me? Hi, good evening, council. Included in your packet are the budget reports for December. The first report is the revenue report. Our revenue earned at the time we ran these reports was 93% of budget, or 159,711,691. Our tax collections are at 97% of budget, or 120,866,469. The books are going to be closed on February 7th. So we're, we'll then start preparing for our audit. There are still revenue and expense items that need to be recorded, you know, namely, there's additional tax revenue that we pull from the tax collectors, obviously in the month of January that relates to 2024. So all of those entries will be made before we close the books in February. So the numbers you see here will not be the final numbers that are included in the audit. They will, they will change. There is an additional, like I said, about $2.3 million that we know we've collected from the numbers we've already pulled. Expenses are at 151,122,600, or 89% of budget. So you can see that our expenses are under budget too, so. The next is the Treasurer's Report, which is showing a cash balance of 136,754,168 at the end of December. The cash balance at the end of November was 154,959,26. And that difference is largely due to the debt payments that we make in the month of December. Our interest earned for the month of December is 368,972. Of that, ARPA accounts for 189,414. And our year-to-date interest that we earned is 5,638,637. Our ARPA cash balance still sits at 49,718,131. The amount of ARPA interest that we've earned for 2024 is 3,057,943. And the total ARPA interest that we've earned, you know, since inception is $7.8 million. Next, you have the listing of budget transfers, and you'll see there are a lot of budget transfers that have been coming through in the last few weeks. And that's because we're having all of the departments go through and clean up their budget balances. So, I mean, they may have been over or under in certain line items, so we're having them clear all of those up so that, you know, the audit obviously will be much cleaner. So you'll see some more of those. Then your accounts payable report obviously shows the detail of the $151 million in expenses that I just talked about. Does anyone have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Mr. Haas?
Yeah. Hi, Ms. Rozelle. Hey, thanks so much for those budget transfers. I really appreciate that. But going forward, could we see the figures of that as well? I know when we prepare for the, when we prepare for the audit, just the dollar amounts. I don't want to create more work for you or your department, but, so me as the fiduciary, I'd like to just really see if we've hit our, how close we've hit our budget every fiscal year, that we can make sure that we're not, you know, we're spending what we, what we say we're going to spend money on as best we can. And from what I can tell.
All those budget transfers are posted and sent to you. So you do see every single line item and every single dollar amount. So the schedule that you see here that I give you once a month is just because you asked for the summary. So, I mean, if we were to include all those dollar amounts on there, it would be like 50 pages long. You have to like, you know, you have to look at each, every one of those budget transfers.
You can't just have an extra column in the spreadsheet here.
It's not one number, though. It could have like 50 lines for each budget transfer. So it's, it's not a total.
Yeah, I don't want to create extra, just make no mistake, I don't want to do that to you or your staff.
It's not extra work. It's, you already have it. The budget transfers are posted online, like you do have them.
And from what I've seen, I commend to you and your department as well, because I see a lot less transfers than I remember seeing in the past. So just so you know, that's something to celebrate. But just from a budget standpoint, you know, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, sure, whatever we could do to make it easier, or to make it, you know, clearer for you, if there's, you know, we're happy to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just not one number.
Yeah, if it's 50 pages, I don't want, I don't want you to do that. Just want to be very clear about that. But I don't know if there's a way, I can see the real dollar amounts, how much collectively, like in summary, like you have.
You can, though, they're emailed to you every time we do one. So you can, you can literally see, this is just a summary, because you asked for this additional schedule. But you have all of those details. So like, for example, I think today, an email was sent out, and there were a few of them attached. So if you just click on that email, you'll see every single line item. That will also be just summarized on the sheet, all the sheet is doing.
I was looking for like a one-stop shop, that's all, and collecting all those, because they are, they come off, and I appreciate that too.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Mr. Wulovich had something first.
Sure.
Ms. Rozelle, also, if you look in the budget reports, there is a line for budget amendments that shows you what the difference is between what we budgeted and what they changed. So it isn't the budget report.
What I do, because we get so many email, I create different folders. So when the budget transfers come in, I just immediately put it in there, because it's too hard. We get so many email, you can't, you just can't go through it later.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Rozelle. Manager Croco, just before we go further, I know that there's been some discussion about position changes in the county, and some council members have some, you know, curiosities about that, although we do get notified when that happens. Is there a way we can get that put into the public report of like the budget or maybe the division reports?
Yes.
In the, in the future?
Yes, I mean, we give you the notice, but we can put them in, if you want them in the division report, I could do that. Or if you want them in the budget reports, we could do that as well.
Maybe we could stick it in the division reports. That seems like it makes more sense.
All right, we'll have that.
And I think that'd be nice. The public would like to see that, I'm sure.
That's fine.
Okay. All right. All right, moving on. Next, we'll have Mr. Riley for the bridge report.
Thank you. Hello?
I was going to say, is there an engineer in the house to help this guy?
I found the button.
Mr. Thornton had reminded me that there was a button, a button to turn on. And so I prepared, I prepared a handout, and, you know, in the last few months, we've been trying to corral this, the state of the county's bridges and roads, of which the county owns and is responsible for approximately 300 structures. And most of those structures are not locating on county roads, but they're on, most of them are on township roads. And most of them are in rural parts of the county, with some, with some notable exceptions. If you look at the handout, the first page is what I, what I'm calling the county's large bridges. The West Nanacoke, the Nanacoke Bridge, which is over 2,000 feet long. And the county's in the process of working with PennDOT to, to engage an engineer to do the, to follow the PennDOT process. You know, PennDOT has committed $10 million so far to the bridge repair replacement. And following that process, the county will engage an engineer to, to basically take the alternatives analysis to the next stage. And with input from PennDOT and the county council, select an alternative, and then design the solution to the bridge problem. In the meantime, the county has a, the inspections are taking place every six months. There's an NBIAS inspection program. And those inspections have, that come up with, have resulted in the bridge being downposted to five tons and have priority one findings. And these priority one findings, basically. And these priority one findings basically say that the work needs to be completed within six months, or there has to be a, a plan in motion or in place to design the major repair replacement. And the, to address these, these significant findings is, would be a multimillion-dollar project because of the nature of the bridge. So at this point, the process with that bridge is to continue the, the regular detailed inspections and to proceed with the, the design as quickly as possible within the required process. The second bridge, which is over a thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet long, in the Water Street Bridge in Pittston, is part of a bundling agreement between the county and PennDOT, where, where PennDOT has taken over the design and construction process and has funded the product, the project ninety-five percent with a five percent commitment from the county. And the, the county is involved in monthly meetings with PennDOT and their consultants to review their progress and design issues. And that project is expected to be, to be bid in, in late twenty twenty-six. They have, they received a nationally competitive eighteen million dollar raise grant from the Federal Highway Administration, which comes with it a hard deadline for them to start that project by the end of twenty-six. As part of that process, the county is, is working with PennDOT and the municipalities of Pittston and West Pittston to look at enhancements to that historic structure to, and there'll be, you know, further developments and reports on that to council as that process moves forward. The next major bridge over a hundred feet is Stevenson Street Bridge, which is two hundred and sixty-eight feet. That accesses a, an area on the, the, the north, north side of Lackawanna River that had been a, a private quarry and swampland. And it was essentially a quarry access and, and sometimes an additional emergency access. That bridge has a posting on it, and it has recommendations in the inspection for improvements, but it, it is gated, because there, it basically accesses private property. That property has recently been acquired by Duryea Borough, and the Borough has requested that, that the bridge be maintained, and that's been the subject of conversation between the county. And the other aspect is that the county, is the Borough has worked with the County Flood Protection Authority on a, a plan and design to raise the levy, because the levy is not certified. So the, the properties that were flooded in two thousand and eleven, you know, would, are not protected yet, because the levy is too low. Issues. As part of that design, the flood protection, there's a conflict between the levy and the bridge, because the bridge abutment is, and that's where the levy would be raised, is in poor condition. So that, that is, replacing the bridge at a higher elevation is a significant investment. And that, you know, has been the subject of conversation between the Borough and, you know, county administration and the Flood Protection Authority, with, with some alternatives of, of potentially seeking funding for perhaps a, a pedestrian bridge or some other reduced-sized bridge, or, or finding other park-related funding because of the park, proposed park use. But they, but basically, at this, this point, that bridge, you know, has a gate on it, you know, and is not being used by the public. The, and then the fourth bridge over a hundred feet was replaced by the county in two thousand thirteen in Nescapack. So on the next page, there's, the, the county has seventy-five bridges that are, by federal and state regulations, required to be, to have a detailed national bridge inspection system, inspection. And, and those inspections range from, from every two years, if the bridge is in good condition, to every six months, if the bridge is, has, has, has significant issues that, where deterioration could cause a, a safety issue. Those and they have findings in, in each of these inspection reports and ratings of the bridges. And those findings can relate, can, can result in the bridge being closed, the bridge having a reduced allowable load on it, or a reduction in the lanes going over the bridge to protect a member. And if they issue a priority zero in the inspection report, the county, the county has to respond. Most of those priority, priority zeros are, a load posting sign has been removed or damaged. They're usually something of that nature, where, say it's posted for five tons and somebody steals the sign, or, or somebody puts graffiti on it. That's, that's, that's sort of a, a pretty common priority zero. Or if there's, an example of a recent priority zero was the county owns some truss bridges that are ancient with wooden decks on them, and they have a, a hole, a hole in the wood, and the county has to go out there and, and replace the wood, and that's a priority zero, so no one falls through a hole in a wooden deck. The, the priority ones are, you know, within six months, and that I, I had mentioned there are priority ones on the Nanacoke Bridge. And often, the priority ones come up, and the priority one says something like, like you, you need to replace the beams. And in a lot of cases, replacing the beams basically means you need to replace the bridge. So right now, what, we're gathering all of the reports from the, the MBIS inspectors, and those inspectors, you know, have been hired through a PennDOT process, and those reports come to the county and to PennDOT. And we're gathering those reports and coming up with a compilation of what significant repairs or replacements are going to need to get done in the coming years on these bridges. And what I, what I highlighted on, on the page are, there, there's a few of these historic trusses, they're wooden decks, they have, they're almost like a museum piece, they have one lane, they're one lane wide with, with wood decks, and there's been repairs to some of them in the past. They have, they basically are only good for, for a passenger vehicle with, at three tons, and most of them have a very, very low traffic on them. What, in, in the long run, one of the more serious concerns is, is Luzerne County and every other county in, in Pennsylvania and the Northeast has a lot of bridges, I, I point out on lower in the page, that were built between the late fifties and the mid, mid to late seventies, that were, that were made with, with precast, pre-stressed beams that were made like a box, that were hollow in the middle, and they were butted up against each other. And they're what they call non-composite, meaning they then had a deck poured on top of them that was not structurally connected to them. So what happens with that is those decks that are not structurally connected crack, and the water and the salt goes through the cracks and, and into, goes into those boxes. And inside of the boxes, water accumulates and causes those beams to deteriorate in a way that you can't see it when it's happening. And there were, back in the nineties, there were some bridge, there was a major, a bridge over the interstate that collapsed in western Pennsylvania of this, of this design. So non-composite adjacent box beams are not built anymore. So if you, if you need to do an adjacent box, you need to have a shallow structure, you, you make it integral with the deck where there's reinforcing, and it's all tied together very tightly. But these bridges are, in the long run, are basically a, a liability for the owners of these bridges.
And Mr. Riley, the, ooh, geez. The, the Stevenson Street Bridge is an example of that, right? The box beams?
The yes, the Stevenson Street Bridge is, I can give, if I have a better picture of it. Yeah, it's, yeah, so that, so that, so the beams are, you know, the Stevenson Street Bridge has beams that are, it, it's not the priority one, but yet, but they have deteriorated, and there's really no good way to fix them. So it's just, the, the expectation is that that type of designed bridge would need to have a superstructure replacement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, what makes Stevenson Street, you know, kind of more critical is the fact that it, the, it has issues with the, the, the abutment on the Duryea Borough side, and its, its, its structural integrity with the, with the stream flow.
And that, that abutment is the issue that's affecting the Flood Protection Authority's ability to further the project of raising the levy?
Correct. That, to do the, to, to raise the levy, you would have to completely replace that substructure. So basically, to, to put the levy in place, you got to replace the bridge. And you probably need to replace the, to have the, that bridge be, have good integrity, you're going to need to replace that anyhow, so. But the, the cost of the, the cost of the bridge is, if the levy is ten million dollars, you know, and the bridge is five or six, so the levy, you know, protects, you know, hundreds of houses. You know, it's, it's a, I would think, a critical investment.
Right.
But it's a bridge that very few people use, essentially.
That zero, that zero people use.
Zero people use.
Right, but I think it, it has, it has, it has other value in the long run with recreational plans. But, you know, if you look at the big picture as it relates to, to flood, you know, flood mitigation, or if you look at, you know, the other, you know, from a county investment standpoint, the other bridge that you own, you know, it's, so, so when you look at, part of the, the task is to look at, at how, with the condition of the bridges, and when you're going to need to do repairs, what's it going to cost, when you're going to replace, when you'll need to replace it, what's it, it's going to cost, and how do you rank those priorities? And one of the main, one of the main rankings of priorities is, is how many people need to use that structure, you know, in the, you know, in their commute, in their going to the grocery store, you know, so the, the, you know, the, the two bridges that, that, that have the most, you know, most usage that the county owns are, are, are the Water Street and, and West Nanacoke, you know, which, you know, thousands of cars a day, you know, versus, you know, you know, you have other bridges that have, you know, you know, a small number. And the Stevenson Street is probably, it's the biggest bridge that has almost no traffic on it, so, just because the nature of, of.
Mr. Sabatino had a question first, and then Mr. Thornton, go ahead.
Good evening. What would be the cost to just tear the bridge out, the Stevenson Street Bridge?
Probably about like a million.
Million, okay. And what would be the cost off the top of your head for a pedestrian bridge?
About two, two and a quarter.
Thank you.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, we, we provided some of those numbers to the administration, and we've been discussing them.
So, Mr. Riley, thank you for being here today, and I just, I wanted to frame something here for the council body. Some of us, some of us were on site and did a site visit of that bridge back in the summer. And it's my understanding, excuse me, didn't mean that. It's my understanding that, that levy now, to height it is, will not protect hundreds of homes in Duryea should we have another high-water event, similar to twenty-eleven or even seventy-two, maybe. So I think it's priority that the levy be raised to protect those homes, correct?
Correct.
And it's also a fact that they cannot raise that levy with the presence of that old bridge there, because the abutment, I, I saw it, is collapsing, it's embedded down the bottom of the levy.
Right.
They can't raise that levy to protect those homes with that bridge present, correct?
Correct.
So in order to raise that levy, that bridge has to be removed, correct?
Right, it has to be removed.
Can't be repaired, because it's not at the height, proper height, to accommodate the new height of the levy.
Well, you could put a bridge clo, so, so what you, you could put a closure structure in, you know, which, like you have in, in Woodsboro, or.
And keep that bridge there, with the condition it is?
No.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to explain to the body here.
So you could put a closure structure in and replace that abutment.
Right, okay, so.
So it's a, yeah, so it's, it's, it, you know, keeping that bridge there and is, you know, still requires substantial work on that bridge.
I, I think our job here, twofold. Council's priority is always the taxpayer dollar, make sure we're protecting taxpayer dollars. Secondly, it's safety of the residents of Luzerne County. And I, I think that the most pressing, urgent infrastructure project right now in Duryea from the county perspective is raising that levy to protect the residents and the houses in Duryea. That, that's all I'm trying to explain here. All right, thank you.
So, so, so we're, we're compiling, you know, working with the county project management, compiling these reports and, and putting together a, a master plan for priorities of investments. And then on the next page, there's, the, the county has, you know, PennDOT's definition of a bridge is, is something that's eight-foot span or larger. The, the county owns a hundred and twenty-seven structures that are from eight foot to nineteen feet, so they're not required to be inspected under the MBIS, and the MBIS program will not pay for their inspection, or their, or the, they're not eligible for federal funds for repair or replacement. And there are drainage structures from two feet to seven feet. A number of those, a number of the structures that are, you know, even, you know, less than eight feet should be bigger than they are. They're undersized, so if you replace them, you have to replace them with something bigger than that. And, and so, so, so since these bridges have not been mandated by anybody in, at the state or the federal level to, to, to track or inspect on this, this schedule of, of six, twelve, or twenty-four months, there, there hasn't, in, in recent years, there has not been a county small bridge inspection program. You know, there had been in, in a number of years past. And we, we recently got, got a copy, got a huge box full of old reports, but they're, they're, they're not, they're, they're not new news on the condition of the smaller bridges. So so, so what's happened, and, you know, as we've been involved in the last six months or so, the, the smaller bridges have been addressed when there's been an emergency. You know, we get a call from a township or a resident that there's a hole in the road or, you know, or, or a blockage of a bridge or something, and then we, with project management, road and bridge, we go out and come up, come up with a solution, or get an emergency permit, or get an emergency contractor. But the right way to do it is, is, is to have a regular inspection program. And it doesn't, so, it doesn't need to be, you know, necessarily with, for smaller structures or pipes, it doesn't need to be every two years. You know, if they're a smaller structure. You know, if they're a smaller structure and they're in decent shape, you can put them on a five-year schedule. But there's gonna be some structures you're gonna find that are gonna need, you know, more immediate repair or replacement, and you might need to put those on a six-month schedule and have, you know, a program in place on, on when they're gonna get, you know, a major repair or replacement. And, you know, and even, even these smaller bridges, like this Miller Road example, which is closed now, you know, this was identified as, as being a, a critical structure a few years ago, but the, the, in the top picture, there, what, what the, what the bridge is, is a concrete, independent concrete walls that go down and have footers, just like you would have on a house, with, that are not very, not deep, and then you have a concrete, reinforced concrete slab that's right around road level. But these, in this particular geology, is sand and gravel, and the footers are not very deep. So, there's, on that, the, on the right side of the page, there's a hole underneath that, that, that right side footer, it's about six feet deep. So, that's why, that's why it's closed. So, the solution is to, to replace it with a precast concrete box culvert, but even, even like a 10-foot, you know, wide box culvert to, to replace this is, you know, is, it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars, you know, and so, so the, it, it's better for your budgeting and your scheduling to, to know ahead of time when these things are gonna come up, because this, you know, if this bridge was on a schedule, you would have known, you know, that this was gonna be a critical item and that there was a potential closure.
So, Tom, if I could just interrupt, so ultimately, that's your goal here with the administration is to prioritize all 300 bridges and, and get the list of the most critical ones now, that in the next two, year or two, we must do something with, and then have second critical beyond that, and then, so you're, you're putting together that, that kind of list?
Exactly, so you can come up with something that, that's gonna be a one-year, a two-year, a five-year, a 10-year out, because even, like, when I talk about, like, the newer ones with the adjacent box beams, you know, if, you know, they could be a couple million-dollar project to replace one of those. So, you, so you wanna start working, and if it's over 20 feet, you, you can advocate and, if you can do it on a schedule, you can get 95% funding for those bridges, but you, you have to get them a few, you know, one or two, three at a time through the process with the, with the state and the MPO, you know, and you gotta show them that you've, you know, you've done your homework, and these are the, this is, this, you know, that you're giving them the biggest priorities, that, you know, why they're necessary, and advocate for them.
Ms. Smith, you have a question?
Are you ready to turn to the district's page yet or not yet?
What's your question?
Are you ready to turn to the district's pages yet or not?
I will, just one second, so that.
When, when he does that, when he turns it.
Okay, and then, Mr. Sabatino.
Really quick, Mr. Riley, excuse me, are you advocating that we should have some sort of maintenance program too, like, we should have, like, an outside company come in and perform maintenance? Or are you saying that we have enough, do we have enough resources right now to put together a, a good maintenance program? Like, I, I, the, I'm getting the sense that you want us on a routine maintenance program.
Well, we are, we're going on a maintenance program, we just don't have the staff, internal staff, to do it. And my understanding is that bridge work is more detailed than the road work, so.
So, this is the first step into getting us into the maintenance program?
Yes, we need to prioritize first, and that's what we're doing, and we will have a maintenance program, not only for the bridges but for the roads. We have to commit to it, otherwise it's just gonna get worse.
All right, Mr. Thoron.
Thank you. For the benefit of the group here, just remember, what he just said is very important. All bridges 20 feet long or longer are eligible for state funding.
State and federal money, yeah.
State and federal money. Any bridge we have under 20 feet, which would be zero to 19 feet, that would be, on your list, 200 bridges, or 220 bridges.
Right.
Are not eligible for state or federal funding, right?
Well, they're not eligible for the state and federal bridge program.
Right, that's what I'm trying to tell the group here.
So, the, so the programs that, that, that you can apply for are the, so, so, so the funds that you would go after, that, that are grant-type funds are the, the Penn Dot and the Commonwealth Financing Authority multimodal grants, which are eligible, and you could also, you could, you can also, you have the county local share account, you know, can be used for that. No? So, you can ask your redevelopment authority to fix your bridges, maybe.
Yeah, we just have, I think one of a few handful of counties are, shells lining up two or three layers that cannot apply on the, the greatest.
So.
It would be really great.
And then, right. And, and then for, for the, for what I would call drainage, if it's a drainage pipe, meaning it, it's, it's a smaller ones, and it's, it's on a K route, for example, the, there's a, there are several different K routes. What K, K routes are, are federal aid routes that you're eligible for federal money for road restoration, like, like road reconstruction or milling and paving, and, for example, we're talking about Lower Demond's Road, which is in poor condition. So, if you had to fix drainage or replace a crosspipe on Lower Demond's Road while you're doing that, you could, you could, you could do that with, in the, with the K route road restoration money.
Mr. Sabatino.
Mr. Riley, one more quick question. You're talking about transportation grants, but is there money out there, and I know funding has been paused for the moment for certain things, and I'm not sure if this covers it, but is there money out there for, like, areas that flood? Like, we're worrying about the cars going over the bridges, but should we be worrying about, like, is there money out there that we could grab for the water going under it? To widen them out to prevent flooding?
So, if you can, if you can prove, like, through a hydraulic study, that, that the bridge is a bottleneck and that you'll be able to relieve a flood level, there, the, the, the Act 13 flood mitigation grants, which I think are limited to half a million-dollar projects, would allow you to, to replace that structure. So, like, we're replacing a, a, a double box culvert on Sugar Notch Run now for Ashley Borough using a flood mitigation grant, because we're able to prove through a hydraulic analysis that the structure was undersized and prone to, to, to blockage. So, so that, that is an avenue, it's not gonna do the bigger structures for you, but, but for something, that's, 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 it's something that's a smaller and undersized structure causing backup or flooding, that's an, that's a potential avenue.
I, I think we're ready to move on to the, the next section, the districts.
So, and so these are, are roughly the, the general districts, and what, one thing we had talked about as we, as we developed an inspection program, which, which we're, we're proposing that we do, you know, in conjunction with our engineers and, and the county's in-house staff, is, is to do it, is to do them, is to do a region at a time, because then you can, you can basically inspect multiple structures in a day, you know, in that neighborhood, and knock off as many of them as possible. And as you can see, these, so, so the, if you look at these, just to give you overall impression, is the blue dots are structures owned by the county, and the green lines are county roads. So, you have a very large geographic area that is in, sort of the southwest corner of the county. And then you have, call it the northern, the north end of the county, where you have sort of more of the structures in the north end of the back mountain.
Any questions on that? Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Can we get a little bit more of a key? So, the green are the county roads, the blue are the bridges that are owned by the county, so red sometimes seems like a border, sometimes it seems like state-owned.
Yeah, so we didn't put all the borders on, on the, on this, the, then we, the township names are on there.
No, I'm more interested in, like, is this a state-owned road, because there's a blue structure on the state-owned road, it looks like the red road and it's crossed out.
Oh.
So, that's state-owned, it's not county, even though it's blue?
So, the, so the, so the net, the, the bridge from Chixi to Maconacqua, which was replaced some, like, 15 years ago, had been a county bridge and was replaced by the state and is, is a, is a state bridge now. So, the, so, so we've been working with this, the, the database that this, that the county, that the, the county's database, and the county database, you know, has listed a bridge, a trust bridge, and, but, but the actual status of it is that it's not a county bridge anymore.
And I'm assuming the black solid lines are roads?
Right, right, there's lots of the smaller roads, yes.
What's the difference between the black solid lines and the dotted lines that are clearly not?
They, they are water courses, streams.
Okay, thank you.
Streams, and some ponds and things like that.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have any other questions about the district-related maps? All right, go ahead, Mr. Riley, whatever else you have to conclude with.
So, and, and in, in general, like, the, sort of the emergencies that we've been called out on, you know, have been, there's no, been, no pattern, they've been scattered in all corners of the county. So, you know, and as I was saying, it's like, then when you come up with where the issues are, the prioritization, you know, has to be on the consequent, like, how bad it is and the consequences of having to close the, close or, or, or post-limit the bridge in terms of, of, you know, what would happen with detours or access to people's properties, because, I mean, occasionally, we've had issues where, with bridges where the, the daily traffic is, is very low, but it's the only possible way for, you know, a handful of residents to get to their, 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 their houses, so that's still, still becomes a priority.
Okay, any other council members have any questions for Mr. Riley? Mr. Sabatino?
Would we be able to get just a list of the bridges? And, like, when you're done compiling all the reports and stuff, just a straight listing of the bridges, their location, and, you know, what priority you're gonna rank them?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Because this is like, we're trying to follow along here, but.
Yeah, they're just, it's, 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 it's a big county and there's 300 structures, so, and then.
Even if you broke it down by, like, the districts that you have there on the map?
Right.
And then do district one with everything in it?
Right, because, like, this is, this is sort of my, my T-shirt, so, so this is, like, they're, so I just, I sorted them by size. Yellow is, are the, yellow's over, over, over 100, green is over 50, then blue is over 20, but there's, there's how many, there's like, what, four, five pages of this, so.
Keeping it broken up by the districts would be great, so that way we can go one district at a time and look through, you know? And I know Manager Kokomo has said, like, following Pittson's lead of doing, like, districts and, and doing everything we can, like, Pittson does a block at a time, so we'll do a district at a time, it makes sense, but it's kind of like, this is kind of like hard to follow.
Right, well, I'm just trying to give you the impression that there are a lot of them, and they're, like, you take an area and you're like, well, there's lots of bridges, they're everywhere, and they're, and they're on, they're on a lot of very small roads too, and larger roads, yes.
You just mentioned that your key was, blue was under 50, is that what you said?
Oh, just, that's not on the plan view, but I, I've sorted them.
So, is, I, hang on, let me ask my question. There are blue ones on here, obviously.
No, all of these are blue.
There are yellow ones on here, but then in the last two districts, there are green highlighted ones on here as well, are those, don't match up?
I don't think the color key is the same in what, in our maps versus his own sheet.
That's his personal sheet.
Yeah, that's his personal sheet, they're two different.
So, what does the green highlighted mean on ours?
The green highlighted ones, well, it's a work in progress.
No, the highlighted bridges.
So, 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 so I apologize with this, our, my key map is a work in progress, but the green, the green ones that you found are, are relatively recently replaced new bridges. Yep, so the, right, yes. And the, and, and, and once we're, once we're done, we will have a, a more complete key for you, and as, as Mr. Sabatino was saying, is, you know, a, a graphic by district, you know, that, that gives you more accurate and comprehensive information.
Well, I think this is one of the most important things that we can do as a council, so it's very important for us to understand it, and I'd like to say thank you for the work that you've done.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you, and I look forward to coming back with more results and the, the conditions and the plan to go forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Riley, we appreciate your time.
He'll be back, and the next time he comes back, he will have earned an engineering degree, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Riley.
All right, finally, we have the discussion regarding the resolution approving a contract with Kittleson and Associates for a Safe Streets and Roads for All Comprehensive Safety Action Plan. Ms. Barish?
Hello, tonight on the work session agenda, we have a contract between Luzern County and Kittleson Associates, and just to give you a little bit of the background of where the cost is coming from, back in 2023, the county applied to the US Department of Transportation for a Safe Streets for All grant to compile a comprehensive safety action plan. So, we awarded, we were awarded $200,000, and we have to match 50, which is coming from the operational services budget, so Dan is just gonna fill you in on the process we went through to select the consultants, so you're only paying for 20% of, of the project overall.
Excuse me, so we had an RFP for, what was it, RFQ, anyway, RFP for consultants to help us with the Safe Streets for All grant. We went for $250,000, Lackawanna County also went for $250,000, so they already started their process, and I, they're with Bowman Consulting, but we interviewed four different consultants and ended up coming up with, well, choosing Kittleson based on their report that they provided to us and their interview that they also provided to us. This Safe Streets for All grant process, the safety action plan is to identify potential areas within the county that need improvements, and will open us up to future funding available from the federal government. So, in order to get the, there's $2 billion allocated in future years through the IIJA grant, but in order to get access to that, you have to go through the first step, which is the safety, which is part of the Safe Streets for All.
Mr. Haas?
Thanks for coming, Mr. Reese. So, essentially, I'm, I think I understand this, this is opening us up to, like, have bike lanes?
No, it's safety improvements, it's across, multimodal safety improvements across the board.
And like, we're talking about curbs, then, I'm guessing?
Yeah, it's, you know.
Side painting?
Poor intersections, you know, just anything transportation, safety-related within the county.
County-wide, this is a comprehensive study for this, for, for 450 grant. All right, thank you, ladies.
Mr. Thoron.
Ms. Barish or Mr. Reese? Ms. Barish or Mr. Reese? I remember a year or two back, we voted here to apply for grant funding along with, in conjunction with Lackawanna County. And at the time, the match, I remember, was being provided 100% by Luzern County. And I was told that down the road, Lackawanna County would chip in their share. Is this that grant?
No.
Okay, it's a different one. Okay.
I think you're, the long-range transportation plan-
Yeah, there is a grant out there, though, that we funded 100% of the match.
Yeah, through the MPO.
What is it?
Through the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Is that what it was?
Yeah, we, we get billed by Michael Baker. They're helping us out right now with our LRTP.
Long-range transportation.
Yeah, the long-range transportation plan, sorry. There's a lot of acronyms. And then we subsequently bill Lackawanna County for their half. Because we, the, the way our MPO is structured-
Okay, we, we, we bill them, but we didn't bill them yet, right?
We do, quarterly. We, we do when we get an invoice.
Oh, all that's going good? All that's going well?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And, and their funding for that comes from, from the federal government, so it's not from their county government.
Any other questions? Mr. Reese or Ms. Barish? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. All right, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to public comment. I have Mr. Griffith.
Well, on my public comment, I just want to reiterate my presentation earlier. Because it seems like my presentation was twisted to some degree. I never, ever spoke about removing safety at the airport. Never. That was not my presentation. If the DA has 1620 rights, then why do we have the agreement? He has to comply. Council is the purse strings of this county. He has to comply with what the wishes of this council is. All I'm asking for is an agreement, a valid agreement. Not asking to remove anything. A valid agreement. I've been asking for it since last March. This didn't just happen today. This didn't just happen when I met with the manager on Monday. This has been ongoing since last March. Okay? All I'm asking for, the airport to sit down with the DA, craft an agreement, bring it to council, and council can approve it. That's all I'm asking for. I'm not asking to remove safety. I'm not asking for any of this drama that if we don't have police officers, we'll get guns in the airport. That has nothing to do with my presentation whatsoever. I have to, we have an agreement. The only reason we have airport officers there right now is because this council approved it. That's the only reason they're there. Not because of 1620 rights, not for anything else. This council approved approving airport officers there. Back in 2019, when I was on council, 2020. I was opposed to it then, and I'm opposed to it now. Because it becomes a boondoggle. We just start throwing money at a project. And now we see where officers are getting $25 an hour outside the agreement, outside the agreement. And we're using this 1620 clause to say he could do that? No. Council made an agreement. The agreement says they get $18 an hour. That's the agreement. If he wants to change it, he needs to come to council. You guys need to have the respect of the legislative branch. You guys control the money. That's what protects us as taxpayers. If you guys don't approve the money, it doesn't get spent. If everybody has 1620 rights, well, then I guess I could give all my people a big raise. Because I have 1620 rights. And council just has to find the money. That's not how it works. So policy and procedure is really, really important in this county. And I think that's what the issue is. For, for this statement to be made, that I was stating that we were going to remove safety from the airport, is no closer to the truth than me saying that the sun is shining right now outside. That's not actually what I said. So let's be really clear about my presentation. My presentation is council needs to have an agreement, a valid agreement with the airport and the district attorney to proceed with this project.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith.
Thank you.
Actually, the sun is shining somewhere, right now. And the unintended consequence of what the controller is saying is that we will not have police at the airport.
That is not true.
Mr. Griffith.
That is not true. No, I will not allow the manager to sit there and make a statement that is not true about me.
Mr. Griffith, your time has expired.
That is absolutely not true.
The sun, the sun is shining somewhere.
I'm not concerned about the sun, manager. I'm concerned about your statement to set on, I'm talking about something different. I will not have my character impugned here, sir. I will not.
All right, thank you.
By her or anybody here on this council. It will not happen. Have a good day.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Haas?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.